You are about to see the Village of Woodridge's regular board meeting which occurred on Thursday, May 12, 2011. Good evening, we'll call to order a regular meeting, the Mayor and Board of Trustees of the Village of Woodridge, and we request Clerk Neestram to please call the roll.
Trustee Abbott.
Present.
Trustee Pittenger.
Here.
Trustee Banks.
Present.
Trustee Beavers.
Present.
Trustee Cunningham.
Present.
Mayor Murphy.
Present.
Form is established.
Please stand for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led this evening by Trustee Abbott. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, you do reply, so that it stands one nation under God, indivisible, and evergreen.
We're delighted this evening under special awards and presentations and recognition to have an opportunity to recognize an employee on the occasion of their 10th year of employment with the Village of Woodridge, and then the presentation of some Woodridge Prologis Foundation Grants followed by the issuance of two proclamations. So to begin, I would invite Chris Bethel, our Director of Public Works, to join me at the podium, and I would invite Bob Goy, a maintenance worker in the Public Works Department who is celebrating 10 years of service to the community.
Thank you Mayor, good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. I'd like to introduce you to maintenance worker two, Bob Goy. Bob started with the village back on May 12 of 2001, although he often says it was just like it was yesterday. He currently works underneath Foreman Mike Midas in the Sewer and Facilities Crew, but has had a great deal of experience working with some of the other crews, most recently with our Road Maintenance and Forestry Group. Bob has a really broad base of experience, a strong work ethic, and a positive attitude which has made him a significant contributor to the department's successes during his 10 years with us. To run through some of Bob's background, he has general maintenance skills that helps him assist and lead in some of our facility work, including carpentry, HVAC, and electrical work, very mechanically inclined, can help with vehicle repairs, helps with the snowplow prep in the fall, as well as during the winter season when we have breakdowns. Very quick study, he's always looking to further his education, as well as helping to teach coworkers and learn from his coworkers. He's also a certified arborist and a licensed pesticide applicator, so he's one of the staff members who helps out with our mosquito abatement program. Bob has really demonstrated some strong leadership skills in his time with the village. He oversees the crews in his supervisor's absence, and has directed some significant projects out in the field, from our annual Parkway tree trimming, to sanitary sewer lining, as well as some stream bank stabilization work. Bob's got great communication skills, works very well with the public, we hear a lot of positive feedback on Bob's thoroughness and attentiveness to residents and his follow-up with them. I think the one item that's key in all the operations, especially in Public Works, is the level of dedication provided by staff, not just during business hours, but after hours, be it windstorms, or sewer backups, or snow. Bob is one of the staff that we can always count on. Over the last year, he responded 93, over 93 percent of the time when he was called for after-hours related issues, and it's something that's really with the support of his wife and family, knowing that he's going to get pulled away from family events and holiday functions. And I have to mention, especially during the blizzard in February, Bob was just tremendous in the dedication he provided us. Bob also contributes to other village groups and activities, he's served on the Employee Safety Committee in the past, currently serves on the Employee Advisory Committee, and was actually the Department Employee of the Year back in 2004. And Bob lives here in town as well, with his wife and two sons are with him today.
Mayor? And Bob, on behalf of my fellow elected officials and dear residents of Woodridge, we want to congratulate you on 10 years of exemplary service to the community. You are one of the three reasons why you have such a wonderful reputation in the village and in the department. So please accept this as a small moment of our appreciation, but before I give it to you, I want you to introduce the family, did I do it right? Because they're supportive of you. My wife Dawn, and my son Matthew, and my son Joshua. Well, thank you to the three of you for your support, and again, congratulations. We are now delighted to have the opportunity to present the Village of Woodridge Prologis Grants, and the first category will be the recipients of scholarships from the Village of Woodridge. And just maybe to go back for a moment, the Village of Woodridge Prologis Fund comes as a result of in the early 1990s, the Village of Woodridge and Prologis, the developers of Center Point south of I-55, putting together a rather unique agreement that caused, as they made their development and as they were successful, that they would donate money to the Woodridge, the Village of Woodridge, that we in turn could go give back to the community, to our youth, our senior citizens, and other worthy organizations and groups. Since that time, we have awarded over $125,000 to worthy individuals and groups, and we hope that this fund will continue on in perpetuity. As I said, the first group that we're going to recognize are graduating high school students who, in a very competitive base of scholarship application process, where we receive a multitude of applications, where the ones that stood out from a very prestigious group to begin with. And so the first person that we will call forward is Tiffany, Tiffany Wu, if you could come forward. And as I told them ahead of time, so they had a little time to think about this, there are five questions they have to answer to receive the scholarship, but they're ones I'm confident that they can answer. Tiffany, maybe share with us where you go to high school, and maybe one or two or three things you're particularly proud of during your high school years.
Okay, I go to Downers Grove South High School, and two things that I'm proud of this year is, first of all, I'm in the Win Ensemble for Downers Grove South, and this year we made it to Superstate. And the second thing is, I'm a part of K-Plus, which is a service organization, and this year we sponsored to Involve It, which fundraised for cancer patients, and this year our school broke the record, and we raised over $30,000.
Excellent, outstanding. And maybe also share with us where you're going to go to school next year, and at this point, what your anticipated major will be.
I'm playing on T Northwest University and majoring in neuroscience.
Outstanding, and maybe introduce your guests to with us tonight.
I have my mom, Pamela, and my dad, James.
Well, congratulations to mom and dad, and congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Jim Blair, if you could step forward. Before we give the most difficult questions, a quick Jim Blair story. I had the honor, a little while ago, to attend a very special ceremony where he was awarded the Eagle Rank, the highest award in scouting. And we typically present a proclamation to those individuals that are recipients of that award, and at the time I presented it to him, I said of all of the proclamations that we've issued through the years to Eagle Scouts, his was the most unique. Was it not unique?
It was very unique.
Tell them, tell them why yours was the most unique.
When he had given it to me, the whole glass screen had cracked on it, because it had dropped, and then been transferred somewhere to my family, but it had character.
He was very flexible about it, which was a good sign. Well, share with us where you're in school now, and maybe two or three things you're particularly proud of.
I am a senior at Downers Grove North High School, and, well, one of them ways, I had gotten my Eagle Scout Award this spring, and it brought me to class six, being a big freshman in Woodridge, and as far as academics go, I've been on the annual for all four years.
Congratulations, very good. And where do you plan to go to school next year, and what's your anticipated major?
I'm going to be a biomedical sciences major at Markham University.
Outstanding. And introduce your special guest to me.
With me, I have my mother Kathy Blair, and my father Jim Blair.
Well, parents, congratulations, and congratulations to you, Jim.
Thank you.
Stacy Miller. Stacy's fortune, I don't have any stories to tell about her. Stacy, share with us where you're at in school, and maybe two or three things you were particularly proud of.
Well, right now I attend Bennett and Kevin and Maya, and about three things that I'm proud of is, I've been in NHS, like the National Army of Society, and I do a lot of like service work like through them, and I've been in fire for like all four years, and like received letters through fire.
Outstanding, you can be proud of that. And share with us where you're going to school next year, and what your major will be.
Next year I'm going to be attending Alabama University and majoring in biology pre-med.
Very good, and introduce your special guest.
I have my mom Bonnie Miller, and my dad, Steve Miller.
Well, congratulations mom and dad, and congratulations to you, thank you. You had more time to think about your names than anybody else. Well, share with us where you go to high school, and maybe two or three things you're particularly proud of.
I go to Downers Grove North High School, and one thing I'm proud of is, through the D.V.A. Match Foundation, it's a bone marrow registry, a couple friends and I have run five bone marrow drives, all at Indy Temples actually. So my first drive I thought was, it was a little awkward, but I know I've really grown comfortable in that environment, and we actually put on a benefit concert for a student in Naperville North who died of leukemia, and we raised over $1,500.
Very good, you can be very proud of that. Share with us where you're going to school next year, and what your major is.
I'm going to Loyola University in Chicago, and I'm majoring in biophysics.
Very good, and introduce your special guest.
Oh, well, this is my mom Sheila Gallagher, and my dad Terry Gallagher.
Sheila and Terry, congratulations, and congratulations to you. We also have the honor of giving grants to other deserving organizations, and the next that we will recognize is the Woodridge Park District Senior Citizens Golden Years Program, and I'd like to call forward Nancy Herring, who is the Senior Coordinator, and Kathy Nartnik, who is President of the Woodridge Junior, not Junior, the Woodridge Seniors Golden Years Club, and also one of the past recipients of the Village of Woodridge Citizen of the Year Award. Share with us a little bit about what this will allow you to do.
The best example is we use it to offset costs, so that we can hold luncheons for the membership. Today, for example, we did Mother's Day Luncheon, and it was free to our members. So, just anything for any folks, anything for any birthday that you want to celebrate.
Great. Well, we hope this, in a small way, helps you to do some things you wouldn't otherwise be able to do. Congratulations for all the work you do. And from the Woodridge Community Resource Center, they're not here yet, so we'll make sure they get their money though. From Operation Support Our Troops America, Deb Rickert. For a number of years, we've had the good fortune to be able to make this donation to the worthy work that you do, and maybe we could just take a moment and give a commercial to everyone as to what you do.
Can I say three things I'm proud of?
Yes, yeah, you could say four.
I can say four, okay. I'm very proud of our military, and the fact that as we continue for many, many difficult years, our military continues to make us all very proud and very strong. I'm very proud of our families, who keep me there kind of as the unsung heroes, and I'm very proud of the people of Woodridge for continuing to support our work. And so this grant that you continue to give us every year, we're so grateful for, and it will allow us to put on our, I know it goes toward our large benefit that you hopefully all are aware of, Rockin' for the Troops, July 16, Cantini Park with Gary Sinise and lots of other entertainments. I hope everybody will come out and enjoy this.
Well, good, and maybe for those that aren't able to do that, what are some of the other things, two or three things, that they might do to help?
Things as simple as writing a letter to getting your friends to write letters to our military people, letting them know that you have not forgotten about them as the years go on, it's so important that they know. You know, picking up an item or a couple of items, for us, we ship thousands and thousands of pounds every month to our troops deployed in harm's way. So a couple of items to support our troops, you can go on our website. I forgot to say, the biggest thing I'm proud of, we have graduated from being Operation Support Our Troops Illinois, and we so appropriately set our correct name, we are now Operation Support Our Troops America. So as a statement of our commitment to the national dialogue about our troops, our families, and our veterans, and our commitment to support them, so I'm very excited about that. So go on our website, osotamerica.org, and you can find out ways that you can continue to very easily support our military, our families, and our veterans.
Well, our deep appreciation to you for your leadership and all of the other volunteers, and please accept this as a small way of nice personal appreciation. We also have a proclamation that we've issued, and I would invite Chief Heron to join me at the podium, and the Chairman of our Police Board, Mary Ann Blair. And I would also, by way of beginning, indicate that the Woodridge Police Department Honor Guard have the privilege of joining the Illinois Police Memorial Service on May 5 in Springfield, and that helps it make it very special, particularly for those of us from Woodridge. That particular memorial is to pay tribute to fallen officers and their families. So we've issued a proclamation that I would like to share with all of you, where as the Congress and President of the United States has designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15 falls is National Police Week, and where as the members of law enforcement agency of the Village of Woodridge play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Woodridge, and where as the men and women of law enforcement agencies in the Village of Woodridge unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore I, William F. Murphy, Mayor of the Village of Woodridge, DuPage Will of Cook County, Illinois, call upon the citizens of Woodridge, and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 15 through the 21st, 2011 as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. A further call upon all citizens of the Village of Woodridge to observe Sunday, May 15, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of their duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Let me present this to our Chief of Police, Chief Heron, who in turn I would like to present to the Chairperson of our Police Pension Board. Congratulations. And Chris Bethel, if you could come forward. Likewise, we're celebrating the heart and the public works, and we've issued a proclamation that I would share with all of you, where as public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and where as the support of and understanding informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets, and highways, public buildings, fleet maintenance, solid waste collection, and snow removal, and where as the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depend on those facilities and services, and where as the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public work departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding the importance of the work that they perform. Now therefore I, William F. Murphy, the Mayor of the Village of Woodridge, DuPage Will of Cook County, Illinois, do hereby declare and declain the week of May 15 through May 21, 2011, as National Public Works Week in the Village of Woodridge, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works, and to recognize the contributions which public work officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. It's my pleasure to present this to our Public Works Director, Chris Bethel, who in turn, if Bob, you could come forward, I'd like him to present it to you on behalf of the department. Congratulations. Please join me. We then turn to questions from the public. We have no formal public hearing this evening. We do have two opportunities for residents and guests, the first of which is to ask questions that are not related to the agenda, which will then be followed by questions and comments that are related to agenda items. So if there is anyone that would like to address the board on matters not related to the agenda, we would ask you to proceed to the podium. Observing no one, then we return to questions that are related to the agenda, and if there is anyone that would like to address the board, we ask you to proceed to the podium. Observing no one, we thank you for being present this evening. We then turn to the on the this vote. All items that are listed on the on the this vote agenda are considered routine by the Village Board and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or a citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda. Before I would entine such a motion, I would like to call on Village Administrator Rush, who will give us an overview of each of the on the this vote items we will be considering this evening.
Thank you Mayor. The first item is Ordinance Number 2011-21. This item amends the Village Code of the Village of Woodridge, various titles for signage, outdoor lighting, outdoor storage, donation drop boxes, fences, wireless communications, solar energy systems, and other various amendments. Periodically, the Village Code is updated to reflect best practices. This ordinance changes provisions, including limiting the number of donation drop boxes per property, granting greater flexibility for fences along state highways, and bringing lighting standards to current established commercial and residential standards. Item B is Ordinance Number 2011-22. This item authorizes the disposal of various types of electronic equipment. The staff would like to recycle the obsolete electronic equipment, but needs the Village Board approval to do so. This ordinance does provide that authority. Item C is Resolution Number 27-2011, and that authorizes final site plan approval for Clara's Restaurant, 6804 Route 53. The owners of Clara's Restaurant purchased this vacant site adjacent to their current restaurant. They intend to build a new restaurant on the site, and this action provides final site plan approval, including engineering, landscape design, and elevations. Item D is Resolution Number 28-2011. It authorizes the acceptance of various improvements and issues a bill of sale for improvements at the Bridgepoint Business Park and the Davie Road Extension. The Bridgepoint Business Park at Davie and Lamont Roads has completed all the various required improvements. The village waits 18 months before accepting the improvements to ensure all the work is acceptable. This action will finalize the acceptance. Item E is Resolution 29-2011, and it waives a competitive bidding process and authorizes the administrator to enter into a contract to purchase various technical equipment from Griffin Systems. The village is going to be outsourcing our emergency dispatch services this summer, and when completed, there will be no longer a 24-hour public access to the police department. As such, a camera system is being installed to monitor the public areas at the police building after hours, and in order to complete the project in a timely manner, it was authorized by the administrator, and now the board is being asked to ratify that action. Item F is Resolution Number R-30-2011. This authorizes the purchase of a new Ford F-550 from Currie Motors. The Public Works Department periodically must replace the various pieces of equipment, and this is replacing a heavy-duty dump truck after 11 years of service. This item has exceeded its useful life. The new truck will be used year-round for snow plowing, road maintenance, forestry, and various other type activities. Item G is Resolution Number R-31-2011. This waives a competitive bidding process and authorizes the administrator to execute an agreement, again, related to the Ford F-550 truck, and this provides for the equipment related to the truck, the dump spreader, the plow, and the wetting system. Item H is R-32-2011, and that adopts the Village of Woodridge Identity Protection Policy. Just like many private businesses, the village is compelled to protect the identities of our residents and the information on our electronic systems, and so we are suggesting the adoption of this policy. Resolution Number R-33-2011 authorizes the administrator to pay the remaining debt service assessment obligation due to the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference. This item relates to a proportionate payment that we have been paying on a yearly basis for the acquisition and improvement of the DuPage Mayors and Managers facility. We have done an analysis, and this item pays off the debt in total to avoid incurring additional interest costs. And then there are various items, Items J, K, L, and M. J, K, and L are related to minutes, and M is the accounts payable or the check register for the Village of Woodridge.
Well, thank you very much Administrator Rush, and at this time I would entine a motion to approve on the this vote items A through I, and accept items J through M. Is there such a motion? Motion by Trustee Potepa, excuse me, Pittenger, seconded by Trustee Cunningham-Pitsick. Are there questions or X, individuals that would ask for separate consideration of any of those matters?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to ask for special consideration, but I do have a question about one of the items in Title IX, the Wireless Communication Ordinance. There's a definition of a personal, a personal wireless facility. Is that, does that include items like household-mounted, like cellular amplification equipment?
It would be like, for example, routers. It would be equipment that would be for a personal home use. The intent is exempt those from the code requirements.
Okay, okay, for that type of equipment, because there's external antennas that people can put up in order to increase, I mean, there's cellular amplification, so you can external, internal antenna. Are those covered by this, by personal, where they're exempt from this, or?
They would be defined as personal.
As personal, because once they're defined as personal, those are not, they're not covered by this because they're essentially not used for commercial use. Okay, thanks.
Any additional comments or questions or action for separate consideration? Hearing that Clerk Neestram, please call the roll.
Trustee Abbott.
Aye.
Trustee Pittenger.
Aye.
Trustee Banks.
Aye.
Trustee Beavers.
Aye.
Trustee Cunningham.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Under my report, I seek your concurrence this evening in volunteer residents who serve on various advisory commissions, and I would seek concurrence in a motion to reappoint Mike Crusek, oh yes, I would be remiss, and I almost was. One of the items that we just approved was the Clara's Restaurant approval, and we're delighted this evening that Rudy Melcolli is present with us tonight, and he is the owner, and next year will be the 25th anniversary in Woodridge, and we'll be able to celebrate their new standalone restaurant in Woodridge, recently winners of the Woodridge Patch March Madness Best Restaurant in the Country Award. And so we very much look forward to your continued operation in the new location. Very proud and fortunate to have in our community. Congratulations. I then seek a motion to concur in your reappointments of Mike Crusek to the Police Pension Board, Mary Ann Blair as Chairperson of the Board of Police Commissioners, Dan Zawacki as Chairman of the Plan Commission, and Linda Mas to the Plan Commission, and Joseph Prospyorka to the Plan Commission for the indicated terms of office. Motion by Trustee Beavers, seconded by Trustee Banks. Final questions or discussion? Hearing Clerk Neestram, please call the roll.
Trustee Pittenger.
Aye.
Trustee Banks.
Aye.
Trustee Beavers?
Aye.
Trustee Cunningham?
Aye.
Trustee Abbott?
Aye.
Motion is approved.
We're fortunate this evening that Mary Ann Blair, the chairperson of the Board of Police Commissioners, is present along with Joe Presbyorka from the Plan Commission. If you could step forward, we will swear you're in so you can continue to work.
I'm Mary Ann Blair, having been reappointed to the office of chairperson of the Board of Police Commissioners in the Village of Woodridge, in the county of DuPage, Illinois, to serve as director, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the United States, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of chairperson for the Board of Police Commissioners, according to the best in my ability. And also, I'm Justin First Pielton, having been reappointed to the office of Police Commissioner for the Plan Commission, to the Office of the Police Commission, to the Village of Woodridge, in the county of DuPage, Illinois, and to DuPage, Illinois, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the United States, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Commissioners for the Plan Commission, according to the best in my ability.
I have nothing to report this evening, thank you.
We have no active agenda items, under unfinished and new business. We have a special card for trustee Pittinger.
He's booked, when is it?
All right, he's booked.
Very good. And the chair retains a motion by trustee Abbott, seconded by trustee Beavers to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a question on the motion.
Okay.
I have a special card for the mayor.
Not quick enough. Now we entertain a motion by trustee Abbott, seconded by trustee Banks. To adjourn, all in favor indicated by the sign I, opposed, motion is approved. We are adjourned.